All right, today is May 25th, 2023 at 7:00. And we'll call us to order and we'll ask our clerk to call the roll of the board, please.
Mr. Blake Moore?
Present.
Mr. Askew?
Here.
Here.
Mr. Hart?
Here.
Mr. Stoltz?
Present.
All members are present, thank you for that. In the agenda packet, we do have some there on the back table for anyone that'd like to pick up a copy and it's also available on our website and Facebook page, but we do have the approval of the agenda tonight, so is any modifications, changes, or anything on the agenda from the board? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve.
A motion by Commissioner Blake Moore, do we have a second?
Second.
A second by Commissioner Askew, any further discussion or modifications to the agenda? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the agenda is approved as presented. In the packet, we do have the approval of the minutes from our regular scheduled meeting that was held here back on May 11th, 2023 at 7:00. So the clerk has provided these minutes. Is there any corrections, modifications, or changes to these minutes as presented by the clerk? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
A motion to approve by Commissioner Stoltz, do we have a second?
Second.
A second by Commissioner Hart, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the minutes are approved as presented by the clerk. Okay, next on our agenda, we do have a couple of public hearing items tonight. The first one is a LEAT Air HVAC and Maintenance request, a rezone from R3 Residential to C1 Commercial for property located at 524B Mission Ridge Road, Rossville, Georgia, 30741, tax map and parcel number 0-140009. We will allow anyone that would like to come up and speak in opposition of this, we'd ask you to come to the podium and speak your name for the record and speak up so everyone can hear you. Is there anyone that wants to speak in opposition of this request? Any opposition? Hearing none, anyone wants to speak in favor of this, or if you are the applicant and would like to speak, you do have that option to speak or not speak, but is anyone else that would like to speak on this one?
Mr. Whitfield?
Yes, sir. Yeah, please come forward to the podium, please.
Yes, sir. I just wanted to...
Just hold off till you get to the podium so we can peek up on the microphone for those at home watching, then we'll let you have the floor.
So we went to the meeting at the...
Please state your name, please.
My name is Aaron, I'm one of the owners of LEAT Air.
Okay, thank you, sir.
We went to the meeting down at the Civic Center and I believe our proposal was approved to present to you conditionally, and I just brought a picture with me today of the storage units that we were wondering if we might be able to put on the property, and it's on my phone, so I have to...
Sure, yeah, if you'd like to show each member, that'd be fine.
What size are those? What size are those?
They have different sizes, either those are like the standard sizes, they're just like the ones...
So those are like a prefabricated container style, does that be fair?
They're actually built, but they're built in a way where they can be taken down and moved.
Are they built in place or built and transported in?
They're built on place.
Built in place, okay.
With the garage shoulders on them.
Okay, good, thank you.
That's all I had to say, thank you, sir.
All right, thank you very much. Anyone else that wants to speak for or against the rezone request on Mission Ridge Road? All right, we'll take this up as an action item later in our agenda, but we'll move forward. We had Ada Jackson request a variance for less than five acres in an A1 agriculture zone for property located at 5675 Chamberlain Road, Lafette, Georgia, 30728, tax map and parcel number 0-449005. Anyone that would like to speak in opposition? Any opposition for Chamberlain Road? Hearing none, is anyone that'd like to speak in favor for this, or if you are the applicant would like to speak? Yes, sir, please come forward, please state your name for the record.
My name's Brian Jackson. What we're wanting to do is have a trailer put on my parents' land, they're getting older and we'd like to be closer to them to help them out and just be there to help them when they need it, and that land is zoned agricultural land, but there's no way you could use it for agricultural land because you can't grow on it or you can't use it for anything else because it's too hilly and it's nothing but red church, so it's good for none of that, so. We didn't know we were gonna have to do all of this, so we went ahead and paid a thousand down on the trailer.
Perk test.
And we've already had the perk test done, too, and when we went to get the permit for the perk test, they told us it was zoned as A1, so that's why we're here doing this now, so that's it.
How big is the track on that?
It's 50 by 28, I believe.
No, the track, the property.
The property, it's, well, it says 7.4, but there's a squared off place on it that's an acre that belongs to my brother. Well, my parents own it, but he rents it from them, so...
So the total track is how much?
I think it was supposed to be eight.
8.4, yeah.
So 7.4 and then an acre?
Yes, sir.
Okay, how many residents are on that 8.4 acres now?
There's two on it right now. That's my parents that live down at the bottom of the hill and then my brother which lives at the top of the hill.
So there's two homes on eight acres there?
Yes, sir.
All right, that's all I got.
Anyone else on the board? Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay, anyone that would like to speak for or against the variance request on Chamberlain Road, last call. All right, hearing none, we'll go into our public comments. Anyone that would like to come before the board and speak, we will give you five minutes and we do ask you to keep your comments, if you would, focused on things that we can maybe help you with, so is anyone that would like to speak tonight? Yes, sir, please come up and state your name for the record.
I'm Jim Pope. Last time I was here at a meeting, Robert and I was talking with you, Robert Stoltz, about this law firm we had retained in Forsyth County.
Yes, sir.
Now, first of all, I don't have anything against the law firm, no malice or anything like that. I am questioning what the board did. They spent $8,000 on this out-of-county law firm. Now, okay, then I was asking you, what benefit did the Walker County taxpayers get from this $8,000? Well, your answer was that Walker County spent thousands and received millions in benefits. Can you tell us how we received those millions in benefits?
Well, I think, Mr. Jim, what we were, when we were talking, if you recall, when the Gateway Apartment Complex was going in, on the north end of the county, you recall that? Okay. And so during that, there was some glitches regarding the zoning, there was some issues that was making it difficult for these people to get their project through, and so Mr. Gerard basically gave an opinion to us, okay? And Mr. Gottlieb gave us an opinion also, but as you know, in this day and time, people are so litigious, okay? We wanted to have plenty of ammunition, if you will, so that we made a good decision on how to move forward approving or not approving that project, okay? And of course, the Gateway Company, they had some big-time lawyers as well, okay? So we were facing litigation had we not made a good decision on approving that property, and based on the ad to item that we were faced with, Mr. Gottlieb gave his opinion, and just like any good decision-making, it's always good to have a second opinion, okay? One opinion's great, second opinion's wonderful, and so Mr. Gerard gave us his opinion on that, that yes, we should move forward and we should approve that. Otherwise, we were gonna be facing some serious litigation, millions of dollars, and if you recall, I referred to, we could have been facing a similar situation, just like the county was with regard to airlanger, faced with possibly millions of dollars, not necessarily in legal fees, but just if they had received punitive damages or something from us, most insurances do not cover those, and so county taxpayers would have been out of pocket. So would I be willing to spend $8,000 to save us for several millions? Yes, sir, I would.
Okay, you said you needed a second opinion.
Yes, sir.
Does the attorneys in Walker County, any attorneys, they do not have that specialty, you might say, knowledge of legal issues to give you that second opinion?
I can't say because I don't know their skill set, but I can say this, when this board convened, we voted to retain Mr. Gerard at no cost unless we used him, no cost. If we didn't use him, no cost, but he covers probably about 13 counties in Georgia, and his area of expertise is county government. That's his area of expertise, that's all he does. He doesn't do divorces, or he doesn't do murder trials, or anything like that, that's his area of expertise.
Does he cover, there are six counties of the Johns Walker County.
Yes, sir.
Does he cover any of those counties that you know?
I can't say exactly how many, which ones he does cover, but I do believe it's somewhere in the neighborhood of about 13 counties.
Well, my time is about up, so I'll stop right now.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else that would like to speak tonight? Okay, seeing no one, we'll move forward on our agenda, and at this time, our Chief Blake Hodge will turn the floor over to you.
Thank you, board, for letting us come up tonight. Tonight, we have a couple of commendations that we're gonna give away, just to give you a little backstory on these, we put this out to, it's a peer review, so if a call comes in and the people in the field think it's worthy, they'll send it up. This is all reviewed by their peers and recommended for these type of awards, and we've done really well, it's getting some good traction with it, and we're excited to recognize these special personnel that we have. So what we're gonna talk about on this one is on February 5th, 2023, at 2252, Walker County 911 Communications Center dispatched Walker County Fire Rescue to a labor and delivery incident in Fire District 2. Company 2 responded with Lieutenant Dan Memes and firefighter Dylan Stansel. Upon their arrival, the crew found a pregnant female, Patient 1, in active labor with a lower extremity presenting. The crew rapidly assessed the situation and confirmed a breached delivery, a potentially life-threatening event for the baby, Patient 2. Firefighter Stansel provided the immediate assessment, treatment, and monitoring of Patient 1. Upon assessment of the presenting lower extremity, Lieutenant Memes felt movement and retraction of Patient 2's leg. Knowing time was a crucial factor, Lieutenant Memes began coordinating delivery efforts with Patient 1. Working together, the delivery progressed and the torso of the Patient 2 was now presenting. This allowed Lieutenant Memes to assess the umbilical cord location, a major concern for compromising an airway in a breached delivery. Patient 1 continued to push when instructed, resulting in delivery of both arms and shoulders. Lieutenant Memes was able to palpate Patient 2's neck, finding the umbilical cord was not compromising the airway, and confirmed a pulse was present. As a team, Patient 1, Lieutenant Memes, and firefighter Stansel further coordinated delivery efforts, and with a final push, the baby was delivered. Upon delivery, the baby was stimulated and suctioned to clear the airway, thus causing the new board to start crying. The baby was then wrapped in a blanket and handed to the dad. Both the mother and the baby waited for EMS for the arrival of a midwife. It can be said with a reasonable certainty, the immediate actions taken saved the life. As such, I'm presenting you with a lifesaving commendation on this 25th day, May 2023.
Holly, if you don't mind.
So this is Holly Weber, she was the communication officer that dispatched the calls, that online with the family, always does an outstanding job, wasn't gonna make it tonight because she was working, but I saw her slip in, and so very proud of you, wanna read this lifesaving commendation to you. Says this commendation is awarded for your swift actions and outstanding dedication to duty and the team effort displayed on February 5th, 2023. Your efforts were the direct result in the quick emergency response and rescue of newborn during a breached birth. Never forget the difference you make every day. Our, I have to say this because our dispatchers never get enough credit, but they're the ones that receive the call, it is extremely stressful in that room, there's a lot of things going on, and to be able to communicate, cat up the call, communicate with the caller, dispatch it, and then communicate vital information to the responders, they always do an amazing job, and they never get enough credit. Thanks, Holly.
Guys, if y'all have a prepared speech, we will give you five minutes if you want. Appreciate what y'all've all done. Congratulations to all three of you. Okay, next item is under new business, is a resolution, Resolution R 023-23, a resolution of the Walker County Board of Commissioners to award a contract for local maintenance asphalt resurfacing project 2023-01, whereas the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, the board is the governing authority of Walker County, Georgia, and whereas Section 11, Item 7 of the Enabling Act grants the board the authority to repair public roads and bridges, whereas on April 13th, 2023, the board approved a list of roads to be resurfaced or paved in Resolution R 18-23, and let those roads for bid under Walker County Local Maintenance Asphalt Resurfacing Project 2023-01. Whereas the project was posted on the Georgia Procurement Registry and advertised in the Walker County Messenger on April 26th, 2023, and on May 3rd, 2023, as required by Section 12 of the County Enabling Act, and whereas OCGA 324-68 provides that where a contract has been let for bid, the county by resolutions enters in its minutes shall award the contract to the lowest reliable bidder, provided that the county shall have the right to reject any and all such bids, and whereas among the bidder who fully complied with the requirements for bidding, Tally Construction presented the lowest unit price bid. Therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, Georgia, that the contract for paving project 2023-01 is hereby awarded to Tally Construction, so resolved the 25th day of May 2023, and in the packet, the board has, and in the public has, the detail of their bid. We did have a second bid from CW Matthews, they were all present for the bid opening. Tally Construction by far was the lowest overall bid, so that's what we included in the packet, and so at this time, we'll move for a motion to approve this resolution.
Motion to approve.
A motion by Commissioner Blake Moore, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Askew, any further discussion of the board? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the resolution is approved, and get some more roads paved. Okay, next item on our agenda is the LEAT Air HVAC and Maintenance request, a rezone from R3 Residential to C1 Commercial for property located at 524B Mission Ridge Road, Rossville, Georgia, 30741, tax map and parcel number 0-140-009. We do ask our planning director, John Persley, if he would come forward and give us an overview of the outcome from the Planning Commission's recommendations, if you would, please.
For LEAT HVAC, correct?
Yes.
I think it was approved to rezone it, to allow you to use it for commercial use. I think we didn't see anything that he had proposed as far as a structure. I think at the time, he was proposing bringing in trailers, possibly, I think, big rig trailers enclosed and whatnot to store there, that's what the discussion was on not allowing.
The note here says that approved with conditions, approved with no temporary storage buildings nor containers, and I guess referring to like shipping containers?
Yes, sir, that's correct. Yeah, so I think boats and RVs was approved, you just have to make sure you're off your lot lines, and that was really it, just no shipping containers. I think if he was to build storage containers, I think he showed you a picture, we would work with that as long as it was a structure that was built for storage and not a mobile unit.
Because it's only would allow for the storage units if you can make the setbacks, and it's just like the rest of these mini storages that are built in place.
Yes, sir, that's correct, just not mobile...
Right.
Shipping containers.
Okay, very good. Does the board have any questions of John?
No.
Okay, what's the board's pleasure on the recommendation from the Planning Commission is to approve with the conditions, approved with no temporary storage buildings nor containers, what's the board's pleasure?
Motion to approve with those conditions.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Blake Moore to approve with those conditions, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Stoltz, any further discussion of the board? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, it is approved with those conditions. The next one we have, John, you wanna come back and join us on this one? Ada Jackson requests a variance for less than five acres in an A1 agriculture zone for property located at 5675 Chamberlain Road, Lafette, Georgia, 30728, tax map and parcel number 0-449005, and this also went before the Planning Commission.
Yes, sir, so I think the 7.4 acres, there's just one structure on now, I think his brother has a mobile home in the rear of the property.
No, actually, according to the minutes, both of those structures are on the 7.4 acres.
Both of them are?
Yes.
Okay, so I think there's a garage on the back, it's possibly, so there's three structures but one garage.
It's also on the other property, and my uncle was the one originally owned it, and when he passed away, my brother took it over.
Okay, I thought you mentioned that that mobile home was actually on the back acre.
It was supposed to.
So I think there was an approval due to the way the property lies as far as how hilly it is, and it's never gonna be used for farming purposes or whatnot, but just due to the amount of structures that are on the property now and due to it being zoned A1, that's why it was denied.
Okay, so the recommendation from the Planning Commission was to deny the request. Does the board have any further questions for Mr. John?
I understand, because it says in the minutes that they denied it strictly on being an A1, and I don't think that's a good reason to deny something, just because it's an A1.
Now, it's like he mentioned, it's cherty, it's not gonna be used for that. One of them denied it just on the fact of, even if it's not used for agricultural purposes, it's still zoned A1 for that, so that's why it was just strictly denied primarily just on the size and then the zoning. Yes, sir, that's correct. As far as the property, I went out there and I looked at the property, it's hilly, it's, I don't know if you'd call it a ridge and a valley running down through there, kind of the center of the property, I think you had mentioned you're gonna add a new driveway and not use the existing driveway that's currently there, so the property, unless you were to, you know, goats or sheep or whatnot, you're not gonna use that property for purposes as far as you're not gonna, you're not gonna be using it for hay, you're definitely not gonna be using it for any sort of crops or whatnot, it's definitely not that type of terrain.
What about the surrounding properties, that was my question.
Well, I think to the north of it there, it flattens out a little bit, but it's all pretty, it's pretty much the same, all down through there.
Flap of the adjacent properties.
I think, yes, it's pretty rough terrain in there for sure, you're not gonna use it for agricultural purposes, and I think that was one of the motions to approve it based on that, and the others were denied primarily on the zoning use.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Blake Moore to approve the request. Do we have a second, is that motion?
I'll second it.
We have a second by Commissioner Askew, other discussion of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I understand what you're saying, it can't be used for agriculture, but it's in an agricultural area, and I don't support it because, and I've heard Cindy Askew say this before many times, when you start, now you're gonna have three homes on 7.4 acres in an agricultural area, so that, I think, being from agriculture myself, that impacts agriculture area, and if you, in the latest assessments that we had, ag properties are up out the roof in the county because they're in high demand, and it hurts agriculture when you allow growth like that in a primary ag area.
Yeah, and I tend to, I agree, Brian, 100% in the fact that when we take away from agricultural property, my problem, and what I'm trying to work with here, and I wish we had some more information on, is family property, you know, but the bottom line is, we've got a lot of properties in this county that are zoned improperly to start with, that we have properties that are zoned agricultural, they're now aren't, we have properties that should be, and it goes down the list with A1, R1, R2, R3, and all the above, so I get that, but I just, I have a hard time with the only, sometimes the reason is, well, it doesn't make the five acres, well, that's why they're asking for a variance, because they knew it, you know, I mean, in most cases. Now, from what I'm understanding from you guys, you didn't do your due diligence on the front end, you didn't really know that until it came time, but you've admitted that, and it's, so I agree, I mean, it's a kind of a catch 22, as far as, and I guess my thought would be, would it be something in situations like that, and I was kinda wanting to look at it, but we've made our motion second, rezoning the property. And, but then you're taking it all out, and so see, then you're really affecting agricultural property because you're just saying, hey, we wanna just take it all out if you won't let us, and so it's, you know, I just struggle with that, and I wanna be supportive of the Planning Commission, and they do us a great job, they do due diligence, but their situations, especially when it's, you know, the family stuff, and I'm just kinda hung up on it, I don't wanna take away from agricultural, but we need to look at other, some other means of working with folks because it's either five or less, or either, or ask for a rezone, and then if you get the rezone, then you're taking the whole thing out.
I'm just, I'm going off our planning director, and I trust him, and I know he does his job.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
And I mean, basically what he's telling us is either good for them to live on or to strip mine, so would you rather somebody strip mine it or let people use their property that they're paying taxes on? So I don't see any reason not to let them live on their property that they're paying taxes on, when it's not fit for anything else. That's where I'm at.
Do we have the discussion?
No, I understand your point, but my point is, when we put these three homes on 7.4 acres, if there's 7.4 acres beside that, then we could put three homes on that, and eventually, we impact agriculture that surrounds that, I think, that's my opinion. If nothing else, for land prices.
It's a highly dense area, is it not? I mean, it's covered with wood, it's not pasture land, by no means it's...
It's on the opposite end.
Yeah, I think the other properties... Yeah, I think the other properties, there's some properties around there that are, but that's strictly wooded.
Right, that's nothing but wood.
Yeah.
Further discussion?
No.
Hearing none, we do have a motion, we do have a second. No further discussion, we'll call for the vote. All in favor of approving this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
One opposed.
Okay, one opposed, so three yes and one no, so that it does pass.
Thank you, John.
All right, the next item we have on our agenda, the board wanted to have some public discussion on the Coates America Building, so some of you are familiar with this, some are not, but this is a old industrial manufacturing facility up in Rossville that was donated to Walker County Government, I think around two thousand four or so, and so there's been some environmental cleanup there that we've done over the years, but the board wanted to bring this up on the agenda tonight and have some, some open discussion, so I'll open the floor to the board on this topic.
Mr. Chairman, how long have we actually had the Coates America Building?
If I remember correctly, and David may correct me if he knows it, I think that the prior administration received that as a donation, I think around two thousand four, two thousand five.
Going on twenty years, close.
I don't think that was a donation, I think that was a burden.
And that's my next question, so in that eighteen year, nineteen year timeframe, about how much money have we had to spend on the Coates America Building? Ballpark.
That I don't know, because there was some work done, you know, in that prior administration right after they took it, I know they did some abatement of some asbestos, and they actually hauled out some contaminated soil and some new soil in, and there's been several phase one, phase two studies, the work that we've done since I've been involved with the PCB spill that we had and working through that cleanup, you know, it's, it's going to be into the six figures. I know just since I've been here, we're probably a couple hundred thousand dollars in, plus whatever was invested or spent in the previous administration.
Thank you.
And there's still a long way to go, Greg.
Yes, what we have done, per the request of E P D, is they wanted a corrective action report of what it would take to fully mediate, remediate the property, and that was due on November the thirtieth of two thousand twenty-two. We submitted that on November the twenty-second of two thousand twenty-two, and we are waiting on a reply, or comments, or approval to move forward with that, that plan of work. And so that close to a hundred page document gave a lot of the history of the project and reports and documentation, and then laid out a plan to do water sampling, do core sampling, to get unupdated analysis of the ground and the contamination, and also to evaluate the results of the fire that happened last year. And so we are waiting on E P D to make modifications, suggestions, or give us an approval.
So it's kind of where I'm at, and why I asked for this to be put on here is, I would like to see this property put back into the private, put into an administrator's hands, and let them endure this cleanup, and get it off the county's back, and get it back on the tax trail. So that's kind of where I'm at, and why I put this on here, and I appreciate you getting on it.
Sure, yes. It definitely has been a burden on our county, unfortunately, sometime jokingly say, it's the gift that keeps on giving.
Yes, sir.
It keeps on giving us problems, and so it has been quite a challenge, and, you know, we've had some, some looters in there years ago that created some of the PCB spill issue with the transformers and all. Transformers have all been removed, the surface of all that's been cleaned up, it's all been hauled off to a permitted landfill, and part of that scope of work that we're asking for approval of is to do core sampling in under that area, so everything on the surface has been cleaned, but to see if it permeated down into the soil, if so, what needs to be cleaned up. But the concrete, we had approval on it to be removed, all that concrete, all the surface type material, transformers have all been properly removed and documented, and all that's been, been paid.
Well, we, we've been blessed that we haven't had any, any more incidents there than we have, you know, we had the fire not too long ago, which not only risked, you know, our emergency service personnel, but anybody that could have been in the building that started the fire, so we've been lucky we haven't had any loss of life, but I think the board has come to the conclusion that we would like to surplus the property, and we just need to, I think we're looking at a couple of different avenues maybe to do that, and try to get some more information, and so we can kind of look at, look at how we may go about it, what may be the best, best direction.
While working with our city partners.
That's exactly right, yeah, we're working on it, you kind of, kind of, just kind of getting the ball, I guess it was just to kind of get the ball rolling, wasn't it? Kind of get us moving in a direction, so hopefully we can have some more, it's not too awful long, we can have some information that we can come back and discuss in a little more depth, and make some decisions on which way it could be the best way to go.
Anyone else?
Very good, I agree with Commissioner Blake Moore, I'd like to see us work with the mayor up there and the city council and get it back on the tax trail.
Yes, very good, okay. Now, for the, we'll move to the next item on our agenda, we'll continue to work on that. Purchase order two thousand twenty-three dash thirteen thirty-seven for a hundred sixty thousand nine hundred forty-five dollars for a Caterpillar three oh eight mini hydraulic excavator for the Walker County landfill. Mr. Payne Gillie, would you like to come up and speak to this request of this investment you're needing to make in your department?
So this is for a mini excavator, it's something that we could really use at the landfill, especially working on our slopes. We don't really have a piece of equipment that can move around on our slopes and dig trenches and dig ditches and improve our stormwater flow like we need. Stormwater's become a hot topic with the state. We're getting ready to gear up and get permitted on several levels, and we'll need a piece of equipment to bring our system up to date. This equipment can also be used in other areas, the landfill as well, not just on the slopes or, you know, digging stormwater. We can use it at a brush pile, we can use it to dig utility trenches, it comes with several different buckets, a digging bucket, a grading bucket, and it's also got a swivel on the end of it that'll allow it to rotate one hundred and eighty degrees, that'll help us get in some tight areas, and we can also attach some of our bobcat attachments to this, so that'll, that'll help give us some additional reach. We had a contractor on site a few, few months ago, he had one, so we got a chance to get up close and personal with it, look at it, he showed us a few things with it, and we felt like out of all the different mini X's that we looked at, this one fits us the best.
So this is through Yancey Brothers, which is the, excuse me, the Caterpillar distributor, is my understanding that this is under the source well pricing contract for government?
Yes, sir, it is, yes. We've also got an extended warranty on it, sixty months, three thousand hours, it comes with a two-year, two thousand hour premium, we've got an additional warranty on it.
Yeah, anything with some of your bed, it's better to get that.
And it's Caterpillar as well, we've had a lot of success with Caterpillar equipment out there.
So it comes with a standard two thousand, and that's an additional three thousand on top of that?
Yes.
It's three thousand hours in how many years?
Two years.
Two years, three thousand hours.
Yes, for powertrain and hydraulics and some of the technical.
But you said it was sixty months.
Well, five years, sixty month, three thousand hours, sorry.
So it comes with two thousand hours, is that three thousand on top?
That's the premium warranty.
Okay, let's see here now, standard warranty is two years, two thousand hours, extended warranty is sixty months and three thousand hours.
So this goes up a thousand hours.
Well, it'd be a, well, that's what I was wondering, is that a total of three thousand or is that a total of five thousand?
Five thousand.
Okay, so you're adding the two, yeah?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, that's what I was wondering, yeah, very good.
And that's included in the one sixty? Yes.
Okay, and this was part of the splash budget for this department, so this is part of his planning of his investment of his splash dollars. These funds are available, so we could, the board decided to move forward with this, you know, we could, we would pay cash for this on time of invoice. All right, any further discussion or question of the board?
One thing, and I mentioned this to you when I was out there, Payne, we talked about on the phone.
Yes.
There's a lot of equipment out there, and some of them we're not using, and some we're never going to use.
Right.
So let's, let's move forward in the process of...
Yeah, I looked at, like I mentioned to you, I've got the list out, and we're looking at probably half a dozen or so pieces of equipment that we could, we could auction off, through either a government side or a county side auction, and it's older equipment too, so it'd be, you know, be a good thing to recycle this.
I mean, don't say something that you need, but there's just...
Pines of older, though, they don't want to ruin a lot of stuff out there.
Yeah, we're going to have to force it.
I looked at some of our equipment, I mean, like, like sixty percent of our equipment is older than two thousand and ten. I mean, you know, we've got, we've, we've got some equipment purchases coming up, so we need to get the older stuff out of the way.
I agree.
Yeah.
Very good.
All right.
So we have a purchase order, do we have a motion to approve the purchase order for a hundred sixty thousand nine hundred forty-five dollars to Yancey Brothers for this piece of equipment?
Yes, sir, motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Hart, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second, but Commissioner Stolz, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries to approve this purchase order.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is for our commissioner comments, so we'll start with the District One Commissioner, Mr. Blake Moore.
We've got some really exciting news, a big grant coming in in the north end of Walker County. I've worked tirelessly on Rick and, and thanks for the north end, Shannon, Mason and Joe spent a lot of time planning and trying to figure out how we're going to do it and how we're going to fund it, and we finally got some good funding. Joe, I appreciate you working so hard on that, you did a great job, appreciate you, Chairman, all of our state partners, Mike Cameron, Colton Moore, Steve Turgon, all those guys for working with us on that.
And also, there's one for Ridgeland High School, right? The ag grant?
Yes, there is a ag grant for Ridgeland, I don't know a lot about that one, I haven't been involved with it, but the chairman has, and Mike Cameron, I know they've worked on that.
Cover that one.
Mr. Hart? Just want to thank you, everybody, I want to remind everybody that, you know, this Memorial Day weekend, starting this summer, everybody's graduating, kids going to be running everywhere, everybody's going to be hooting and hollering, so just be safe, be careful, enjoy your summer, good luck to everybody, hope you pass, hope you pass your classes, kids, if you didn't, get them studying harder.
Mr. Hart?
Thanks to the firefighters, a lot of people fuss about the fire department. Chief Hodges and I have some tough conversations sometimes, but you guys do a great job.
Yes.
And it, those guys over here are not superior, I shared an experience with chief that happened about two months ago down the road from my house, a friend of mine passed away, and the firefighters are there assisting, so good bunch of people, even though they make them mad sometimes.
And the nine one one operators, I mean, you just don't, you know, you don't ever think about what all they do, they do a lot.
Memorial Day, that is correct, but while you're having a picnic, think about those that are here.
Yes, sir.
Because there's a lot of people that aren't here this Memorial Day. And Honeybee Festival, a week from Saturday, yes, June the third, and Lafette, it starts at eight in the morning and lasts until midnight, so it's free for everybody, concerts, cornhole games, arts and crafts, my wife is always spending ten thousand dollars.
And you will be there till, you will be there till midnight, correct? Brian will be there from start to finish.
He's on the clean.
Are you singing?
Yeah, I'm singing.
Okay, I'll be there.
Ten.
It's past my bedtime. So I want to thank all of our Walker County employees for the wonderful job that you guys do, and our emergency services, nine one one, that is just phenomenal, that they deliver a rich baby, rich babies will put gray hair in their head, and so they did a wonderful job with that, so they're not...
So did the mother, we're going to give her a look right now.
Absolutely, yes, sir, yes, sir. I, I do want to recognize our building officials, I actually ran into a very well-respected builder in Walker County, and he was most complimentary of you, John and Brandon, how professional you were, the job that you do, how thorough you were, and so very complimentary of your, of your office. So as, as Brian mentioned, Monday is Memorial Day, and it's a time for us to remember our fallen servicemen and women who paid the ultimate sacrifice, that is what allows us to have the freedoms that we have, and so just remember those folks who are no longer with us. At this point, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to yield to you, I think you and I had discussed a little update on the Hinkle Fire Station, so I will, I will yield to you, sir. Thank you.
Very good. Yeah, we have a lot of exciting things going on in our county. Commissioner Blake Moore was mentioning about the, the grant that we just got notice of for the recreation addition up in the Rossville community, and that was a two point two million dollar grant to do a splash pad, playground, pavilion, bathrooms, very, very much needed with all the growth we're having on the north end of the county, and so very excited about that. Also, we recently found out that we had applied also for a hundred thousand dollar grant for an outdoor learning lab at Ridgeland High School, and that was in collaboration with them. Mike Cameron, Representative Mike Cameron was very instrumental in helping push that through. We have been notified that we are, have received that award, and so we will be collaborating with Ridgeland High School, and they have some additional funding and all, but that's kind of a joint collaborative project to pull that together to help them with an outdoor learning lab for their agriculture students. And so they come to us for, for help and assistance with that because it had to come through the county. That particular grant wasn't something the school system could just apply for on their own, so they needed us to come along as a partner in the county, and we was able to do that. It's also, we did the final approval tonight on the road paving, you know, that's, I think it was around forty-one roads and about thirty-one miles of, of actual miles of road, that will be underway very quickly, it's my understanding, Tally Construction's going to get that started very quickly. They have just finished up on a, the last phase of a project, we actually started on a couple of years ago, where we paved West Cove Road, Dogory Gap Road, all the way to Highway one fifty-seven on Lookout Mountain. I think, is the striping being completed, Carlin?
It has.
Striping's being completed, we still got to put down the centerline reflectors, but, you know, that was about a fourteen mile stretch of, of road, and there weren't many good spots in that road before we started, there was just a lot of base failures and a lot of decay in that road, and that's a real beautiful part of our community, and so that's all very nice and paid, and so that's over and above the thirty-one miles that's forthcoming this year. Also, our broadband internet fiber program is moving forward with wind stream, that's well underway, and, and they hope to have all of those members connected by the end of two thousand twenty-four, so that's moving forward, so a lot of the people in the south end of the county and up on Lookout Mountain, over in Villanow Community, we're hearing from many that are already getting hooked up. Some of these people have been basically on a dial-up type connection that's been very sporadic, some have D S L, but it's very sporadic and low bandwidth. They'll be able to go from a, you know, three or four meg connection to gig speed connection just, you know, literally overnight, so it's really phenomenal, and that again was a, was a grant that we got to be able to do that, and so we've just been super blessed with that. Also, with our firefighters here tonight, we wanted to publicly talk about our Hinkle Fire Station project, that is back on the, on the project list to, that was one of our splash projects, and so we're working with an architect to do a redesign because the first design did not encompass as much of a community center, and so there wasn't a second story, so moving forward with that, and hopefully we'll get that completed this year as well to finish out that Hinkle Fire Station up on Lookout Mountain completely. That's been a project that started many years ago, and we now have that splash funding in place to do that. in place to do that. So just a lot of positive things going on. Also, our Annex Two project is hopefully be finished in about another month, we'll do an open house on it. Out of the Lookout Mountain Judicial Circuit, Walker County is the only county out of the four that has three Superior Court, courtrooms, this being one, where they can actually hold jury trials and have three Superior Court judges all sitting at one time, holding three trials. And that's very instrumental in helping our court system get caught up on the backlog of cases through the COVID pandemic. And so it's been a hopping, bustling couple of weeks in Walker County with all of the three courtrooms being used, also the juvenile courts actually using their prior hearing rooms, they keep juvenile court running, so it's been several times, there's been actually four court proceedings going at one time, and so that will help work through that backlog as well. Also, our mural project, so, excuse me, you probably noticed tonight, they've started putting the, the primer slash filler coat of the block on the wall today, they should finish that up tomorrow. That needed to be done just within a few days prior to the artist starting the, the mural project. And that's why we've had to wait and actually apply that coating so it's a fresh coat. So the artist has committed and is scheduled, weather permitting, the Tuesday after Memorial Day to start the, the art mural project on the west wall of the Annex Two building. And it'd be a several-week project, but that'd be something that will be done this summer as well, so many people have been anxiously waiting to, to beautify that spot and to get that mural project completed, and they'll be starting on that next Tuesday. So as we move down through our agenda, we do have a couple of items for executive session, it shouldn't be too long, so I'd like to make a motion, we go into executive session to discuss personnel. The second item is also litigation, so I'll make that motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Askew, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we'll return shortly.
Hi, I'm Joe Leguee, Public Relations Director for Walker County Government. The board has just entered executive session. This is a process that allows elected officials to discuss a specific, sensitive topic behind closed doors. These are topics that are exempt from the Georgia Open Meetings Act. Executive session topics must fall into one of three categories: litigation, real estate or personnel matters. In terms of litigation, the need may arise for the board to consult with the county attorney on pending or potential lawsuits, settlements, claims, administrative proceedings, or other judicial actions brought by or against Walker County Government, its officers or employees. Real estate covers discussions regarding the future purchase or acquisition, disposal or lease of property. Personnel matters would cover the discussion or deliberation on the appointment, employment, compensation, hiring, disciplinary action or dismissal of a Walker County Government officer or employee. Now, if a vote is needed pertaining to an issue discussed in the executive session, it must be taken in an open meeting, otherwise it is not binding.
Okay, it is 8:21 PM, we're still on May 25th, 2023, just completed our executive session, there's no further action of the board at this time. Do we have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
A motion by Commissioner Blakemore, do we have a second?
Second.
A second by Commissioner Stoltz, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned. Thank you, gentlemen.
Somebody's been catching their quick draw.